So we're going to go ahead and get started and call this meeting order. Today's 26th September version of the Midwest City Council. Thank you for being here. Let's see, my cadets didn't show up. So Rick, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Von, could you come down and offer the invocation? Please stand.
I ask you to bow with me, please. "Glorious heavenly Father, Creator and Sustainer of life, we give you the glory and the honor for this day and this occasion. Father, we thank you so much for the beauty of your creation and this beautiful day that we've enjoyed today here in Midwest City. Father, I thank you for this council and their service to this community. Father, I want to thank you for their wisdom and their discernment. I want to thank you for their willingness to conduct the business of this city tonight and just ask that you give them peace and comfort in their decisions. Father, I know we don't always agree on everything as human beings, but we just pray that civil discourse be in this place and that your spirit be upon us. Father, we thank you so much for the great nation and the great state. Father, we thank you for the freedoms we have to enjoy this evening and assemble in freedom. We thank you for the men and women who are all over the world ensuring our freedom. Give them peace and protection. Father, I ask a special blessing beyond one of our former council ladies, Christine Price Allen, and the loss of her husband. Father, be it Josh Ryan and his family and loss of his dad. Father, we just pray that we continue to act and conduct ourselves in accordance with your will. That we treat each other with respect and kindness and compassion. Thank you for your son, Jesus, and the blessing of his sacrifice. In its name, I ask these favors. Amen."
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inhales) Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have several proclamations before we get into community-related announcements, so we'll get those out of the way. They didn't give me a microphone. Can everybody hear me? This is Super Recyclers Month. And of course, Midwest City has been a recycling community for a number of years, and our partners with Republic have helped us out quite a bit. So that is, this is always a major community staff. Whereas the United States generally... Well, we can't be more than that. I'm glad everybody's laughing. Makes me feel a lot better. It's gonna be a good night, hopefully. Long Bridge Crest states. Okay. Whereas the United States generates more than 250 million tons of municipal solid waste every year, and whereas each year recycling keeps approximately 89 million tons of material out of the landfill and gives it a useful second life. Whereas the City of Midwest City and Republic Services are hosting the 2023 Super Recyclers Program in order to recognize residents who are recycling the right way by knowing what to recycle and placing only empty, clean, and dry items in the recycling bins. Whereas 2023 Super Recyclers will receive a $25 gift card to a local business or restaurant to be honored during a special presentation at October 24th, 2023 Council meeting. And whereas Midwest City leaders can use this opportunity to spread the word about excellent recycling opportunities available to Midwest City residents and the importance of practicing proper recycling habits. Therefore, I'm Matt Doos, Mayor of Midwest City, hereby proclaim October 2023 as Super Recycling Hunt and encourage all residents to observe the recycling. So with that being said... And so, here we go. Now, who's gonna win? Von Sullivan convinces Rick.
I don't know. I don't know that we need to discuss that, sir. We want to keep that in the low. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank the council persons that participated last year and encourage everyone to sign up. That'll be part of the announcements. Everybody got an email today with a link for you all to sign up and participate. We would love to see you out in the community, and I think the community would love to see you out in the community.
Can I say "Round the Street"?
No.
The boss said no. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize Shayna Bennett from the Chamber. She's done a fantastic job. They have been a wonderful partner. Along with our businesses, for those that are out in the audience, that have helped participate with this, most especially Crystal Bennett and Terry, who have been the ones that helped manage and organize this. You all have done an amazing job, and you deserve all of the applause.
Those of you in the Republic that have been a great partner for us, we...
For a living.
So, all right, this is a party ticket.
And we do have one tip. Do not put used pizza boxes in your recycling. Just saying.
Von, can you hear me? Kate's with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health, and this is an extremely serious issue that we're gonna discuss. Whereas mental health is essentially everyone's overall health and well-being according to the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. Within the past year, 4.1% of adults in Oklahoma City had serious thoughts of suicide, with 1 in 10 of students in 40 potential suicide. Whereas only 300,000 Oklahomans report having substance abuse disorder, chronic, a chronic chronic disease that individuals can recover and go on to live healthy lives. Whereas early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental health, mental illness, suicide prevention, and recovery from substance abuse disorder. Whereas treatment can easily be assessed by calling 988, the mental health lifeline that supports Oklahomans experiencing a mental health crisis, struggling with substance abuse, or having thoughts of suicide. And trained medical or mental health professionals monitor the lifeline and respond via text or call, mobile crisis teams, urgent care, and other crisis centers and follow-up appointments. Whereas help, education, or invaluable resources are available at oklahomannetworkofcare.org. And whereas Midwest City and the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believes that all Oklahomans deserve to have mental health and addiction services within reach without fear of judgment or shame, and that we should work together toward mental health and zero suicides in our great state. So therefore, I'm Matt Doos, Mayor of Midwest City, hereby proclaim September 23 as Suicide Prevention Recovery Awareness Month, and hereby encourage all citizens in Midwest City that support anyone that is experiencing mental health or struggling with substance abuse. Patrick? Recently, we had a call on Catholic charities and some other groups who helped us with a issue in our town, relocating residents that were asked to move from a dilapidated place. And Catholic Charities have been vital part of that recovery, and so we're here to honor you all. Whereas Catholic Charity of the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City serves those in need regardless of faith and is known for poverty-reducing social services and emergency programs across Oklahoma. Whereas Catholic Charities is a valued partner for Midwest City through their case management of the city's transitional housing program and the recent emergency case management services provided to the displaced tenants of a condemned Midwest City apartment complex in June 2023. Whereas out of concern for these displaced tenants, Midwest City staff created a resource fair for tenants by reaching out to local service providers, including shelter and well, legal aid services of Oklahoma, Metropolitan Fair Housing Council, all of which provided essential information to help with legal issues, deposit returns, and fair housing claims for which we are grateful. Whereas thankfully, Catholic Charities who are also participated in the resource fair and took great care to listen and evaluate individual needs, resulting in funding to address relocation issues, and they also approached the United Way of Oklahoma City regarding these things, which led to the additional funding for a total of $25,000 in relocation assistance for tenants' moving costs, first month rent, and utility deposits. Whereas the City of Midwest City desires to honor Catholic Charities, and in particular, Mr. Patrick Raglo, Executive Director for this immediate call to action upon hearing in this difficult situation. So therefore, I'm Matthew Doos, Mayor of Midwest City, to hereby proclaim September 26 to be Catholic Charity's Appreciation Day in Midwest City and encourage all residents to appreciate those services that they provide.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Members of the City Council. And I must commend the city for taking action against housing that is beneath human dignity. Too often, we allow that to continue and continue and continue, and as hard as it was, and it was hard, to address the needs of those that were affected by the condemnation and the need to move, it's better than allowing dignity, I mean, housing beneath human dignity to continue. I want to thank Deidra, who was my case manager, lead in that. So she did all the heavy lifting. I wore the tie, and I brag about it. Naina Daler with the United Way of Central Oklahoma City, they were the largest funder, and they work across central Oklahoma in ways large and small, in ways known and unknown, and we're grateful to live united and partner with them and all the other partner agencies. Tina Belcic connected us with the City of Midwest City and all of you and the other agencies that were mentioned in the proclamation. Really grateful for this opportunity. I'm a three-time veteran of Tinkler Air Force Base, so twice a resident of Midwest City, and really got a lot of fond memories for this great city and really appreciate this recognition tonight.
Thank you. I'm getting correct? Oh, oh, yeah. The only part of the verse that... I can't let it go without being said that bringing all those services together to help those residents over there was the thought process of our city employees who brought, who thought that process out, brought those entities together in one spot to help those residents. So they too deserve a round of applause. We are Midwest City. So with that being said, Mr. Lyon, you're on deck.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening. We'll start with our September sales tax report. It's an interesting sales tax for Midwest City for the month of September. We had a, occasionally, we'll see corrections from the Oklahoma Tax Commission where someone might have paid the wrong, the wrong number, where they have multiple entities within the metro area, and they might send the tax to the wrong, the wrong city. And as a result, we had a fairly major correction that was, happened over about a 15-month period from a retailer that went to the wrong city. So we were adjusted for the month of September by $617,000 to the negative that we received from another city's sales. So it did affect our sales tax. We were down 12.23% for the month at sales and use tax. Had we not had the correction, the correction really occurred last year, had we not had the correction, we would, we would be about flat. We would maybe be up just .405 or so, something like that. So anyway, so that, that puts us for the year, at this point, three months into the year, we are still up about 1.2%, 144,000 for the year, or for the month in year against projection. Had we not had that, we would have, we would be up 3%. So anyway, we will continue to watch our sales tax. Even without this adjustment, we were flat. So we will, this will be the first time that we've been flat without this adjustment in quite a long period of time. I see it from the metro area, the other cities, there's some cities that are down as high as eight or nine percent. So we're seeing inflation kind of reach its peak with elasticity and disposable income comes to a point where people can't spend any more money, no matter what the cost is. So that's the, that's the area that we, we are watching for and will, will look at for the next six months as we go through this budget year. Next item is, I'd like to announce our, announce and invite everyone to our neighborhoods, in our neighborhoods to participate in the National Night Out. It's our annual community building event. It's occurring next week on Tuesday, October 3rd. Please go on our website or call 739-1010 at the city to get more information, but we'll post a calendar with the times of all the neighborhood associations and when and where they're meeting. And we talked a little bit about the Super Recycler Program, which is back from October 2nd to the 13th. We'll be auditing neighborhoods and looking at recycling, and if you, if you meet all the guidelines and the rules of recycling that are clearly posted on our, on our website, you'll receive a $25 gift card. On October 12th, two weeks, we will have, the whole community will be gathered together to, to, for a picnic with, it's called Picnic with Protectors in Public Works. It's October 12th at 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM at Joby Barnes Park. Once again, the whole community is invited. It's a free event, offering children and families positive interactions with our public works and our police and fire and other ambulance service. So please come out for that, for a hamburger or a hot dog. Next, the groundbreaking for the New American Glass Headquarters and Assembly Plant, which is in Soldier Creek Industrial Park, is coming up next week. It does not have the date on here. Do we have a date and time?
October 3rd.
October 3rd? 11:30. At the site, at the industrial park, American Glass promises to bring 70 jobs in Midwest City. It creates a beautiful campus, and it'll be our first tenant in the Soldier Creek Industrial Park, and it'll anchor the beginning of our 23rd street corridor improvement plan that we'll be working on over the next few years. And then finally, we'll have two more things. Saturday, October 21st, is our next Cruisin' for Coffee event in the Santa Fe parking lot on 29th Street. And then we added this late. For those that didn't see the paper, front page, I think Jeff had on the paper, of Midwest City receiving their ISO 1 certification. So we, we are an ISO certified, ISO 1 certified city once again. We've been how many years now, Chief? 18 years. For the longest time, we're the only ISO 1 rated city in the state of Oklahoma. I think for the first time we did this, there were 45 in the whole United States. And that's, being an ISO 1 significantly helps us with our commercial and our residential property rates, our insurance rates. It's based on responses and our fire department. It's also based on our ability to provide water and our dispatching capabilities. So good job to the city departments that continue to keep us an ISO 1 city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I do want to thank all of you that got out and voted last week on our sales tax extension and those of you that supported it. It's greatly appreciated. And I would ask those that you didn't, that didn't support that, to please reach out to me and let me know why. We would, we'd kind of like to know what your thought process was on that. So again, thank you for passing that. I also want to bring attention to the next month, the school district is having a, a bond election, and would ask that you support that as well. So we move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. Trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If trustee requests to discuss an item, or there is not unanimous consent, then an item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda, but pull item number six.
Item number what?
Six.
I do have a motion to approve except for item number six.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. Item number six, Mr. Lyons.
Yes. Before we move on, could you ask that any of the people that are being appointed to the, in the audience, in Ohio, I'm not sure if anybody else is out there, if there are no meetings.
Oh, well, yeah. All those that are being appointed to the Arts or Historical Society, please stand up. That's a new initiative in Midwest City. We're trying to establish an arts council and a historical society to kind of bring those entities together in Ohio. Thanks for volunteering and helping. I thought everybody else would be here, but I guess not. Thanks for...
He's on the park ward, which is critical because he has the money.
You're right. Okay, item number six, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, authorizing Tim Lyon, city manager, submit letter of intent to apply for an opioid abatement grant award with the Oklahoma Attorney General's Office. Terry Craft, do you want to come up for it? And Dawn, handle this.
I, I only ask to pull this just to recognize the effort here. I had actually had a question about whether we would be trying to apply for that whenever I saw the Oklahoma Attorney General's Office was offering opioid abatement grants, and so I just wanted to thank you, Tim, and thank Terry for the efforts to pursue that grant award for our community. And with that, I would move to approve this item.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number six. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension of motion carries by unanimous consent. Move into our, the rest of our discussion items. Item number one, Mr. Lyon, and no action is required on this particular item, council.
This is a public hearing, discussion to provide interested persons an opportunity to be heard pursuant to Title 62, Section 859 of Oklahoma Statutes regarding the provisions of the First Amendment to Project Plan relating to Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, to provide $450,000 in development financing assistance to American Glass, Inc., in connection with the development of a new headquarters and manufacturing facility to be located in the Soldier Creek Industrial Park, 7450 Northeast 23rd Street, to provide funds in the amount of $5,600,000 for the construction of utility improvements to serve the 112,488 square feet. It says Centrillium Protein Land is... Okay, so, okay, we're doing both. All right. Located approximately 7210 Northeast 36 with such facilities to operate by Centrillium Protein Inc. as an Oklahoma corporation providing, to provide funding for rail line improvements in the amount of $3 million to serve the Centrillium site and reduce its cost of interstate transport and to serve the Soldier Creek Industrial Park and AGI site, and finally to fund $750,000 for public improvements projects in the Northeast 23rd Corridor.
Mayor, this council, I think that you may remember that we had our third public hearing back in August. There are two public hearings required before the adoption of project plan for major amendments thereto. The increase in cost on our project plan is more than 5%, and thus it has to go back through the Local Development Act Review Committee, to which Mr. Sullivan is also a member, as well as the Planning Commission, and then on to City Council, the line hearing. I think I would claim the increase in cost that are part of the amendments in project plan, and of course, we have removed local urban services and added American Glass as the specific decision so that we can... This and the next item both address these issues. Mr. McManahan, myself, here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm with the serve of...
Hello, Mr. McManahan, how are you?
Mayor, forgive the interruption. Dan McManahan. This item is for interested parties to come forward and make any comments they want to make on this.
Yes, sir.
So that's what the law requires us to do. I, I'm not sure the audience is full of people who want to do that, but I want to make sure we give them the chance if they're so involved.
I was just fixing to announce that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, and anyone having anything to bring for the council in regards to this particular item, now is your chance. Hearing or seeing none, and we can move on to item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, possible action to approve and/or amend and ordinance approving that certain First Amendment to the project planning relating to Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma. The North Side Improvement District ratifying, confirming actions, recommendations, and findings of the Midwest City Local Development Act Review Committee in amending the project plan for Increment District Number Three, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, adopting certain findings, providing perseverance, and containing other provisions relating thereto, declaring an emergency.
Anyone have any questions about order of the project plan or the increases in the budget for the project? the budget for the project?
Hearing or seeing none, and the chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number three, Mr. Lyons.
EC 2145, public hearing discussion, consideration of possible action of an ordinance for a district from planned unit development governed by medium-density residential to Community Commercial District C3, and for a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from office retail to commercial for the property described as attractive land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 34 Township 12 North Range, two west of the Indemority and in Oklahoma County. I was told by the city attorney I don't have to read this.
First off, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council in regards to this issue?
Do I do my item first?
You can go ahead now.
The applicant, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the owner, is requesting to rezone the subject property from a planned unit development governed by medium-density residential to Community Commercial District, and to amend the comprehensive plan from office retail to commercial. This case was originally published to be heard at the July 25th, 2023 council meeting, and was withdrawn by the applicant prior to start of meeting. The applicant's request for rezone is for accommodation to permit a car wash. If approved, any allowable use classification within the C3 district would be permitted. The applicant hired Traffic Engineering Consultants, Inc., to conduct a comparison of the traffic impacts between the originally proposed Glenhaven Residential Development and the revised Glenhaven Development. The study is attached to this case packet. And please note, an updated study was submitted 7/31/23 by the applicant that gave more details of the study itself and is included in this packet. At the time of planning commission, there had been one surrounding property owner in opposition to the proposed rezone due to there not being a buffer between the residential and commercial areas and added traffic. Property abutting a residential district shall be screened and landscaped in accordance with municipal code. There was discussion amongst the commission regarding traffic impact on Reno and Glenhaven and the ingress and egress of the car wash. The owner, applicant, owner's legal representation, and traffic study consultant were present and addressed the commission. Todd Butler of Traffic Engineering Consultants explained the traffic study to the commission and audience. Many residents from the Ridgecrest neighborhood were in attendance in opposition to the proposed rezone. Six residents addressed the commission with concerns of location, traffic, water usage, and construction oversight. Both state and local public notification requirements were met. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, and action is at the discretion of the council.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Okay, there's some more information that Emily doesn't have, and she did mention that on the 25th of July, it was scheduled to come up. Subsequent to that meeting on the 25th, the city manager and I were scheduled to do a talk to the neighborhood association on the sales tax. So we took it, we reached out through Brandon Bundy to Mr. Grubbs, Joel Bryant, and asked them if they would appear with us at the neighborhood meeting, which they did. They didn't have to, but they did. We did our presentation on the sales tax, and then we opened the floor up for them to get butchered, which didn't happen. It was very cordial, and some good things came out of that meeting. One was, and Joel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a commitment to make sure that the water issues are taken care of. And Mr. Bryant, he committed to making sure that there, I mean, there's only so much you can do if it's, you know, hurricane, there's going to be some water runoff, but they're committed to fix the runoff. Is that correct? You're welcome to come up here and stand and defend yourself if you want to, or have your... Okay. So, the other issue that got brought up besides the water was the traffic. And they had their traffic study, well, we had our traffic study too. We had Mr. Bundy do a traffic deal for us because that basically dummies it down so we can understand what we need to do. And there was a couple of things that were going on there that were being caused, and their development's not even there yet. One of which is there's a private, there's a business on the corner of Glen Haven and Reno that when cars come out of that parking area, they block the intersection, which affects the people in Glen Haven. So, and you'll see later on in tonight's agenda item on number seven, there is actually a sign that we're asking for approval to put up there that we're hoping will take care of that problem. I mean, we can't foresee the future, but we're hoping that will at least mitigate some of the problems. The other problem was the cars at the intersection have to wait long, and the cars are blocking. So our engineer went out there and produced a couple of documents and came up with a couple of solutions. And it's my understanding, Brandon, that you and Joel have talked. Is that correct? I'm doing your work for you.
We exchanged emails.
Okay. And one of the ways that Brandon has come up with, that could solve some of the problem on Glen Haven is for a right-hand turn. Is this correct?
Correct. Southbound right-hand turn.
Do you want to explain how that would...
So, according to their traffic study, they will be generating some traffic that's going to come into the car wash and then go out. And if you can have a right turn only bay, then those people don't have to wait behind the person that's waiting for the signal to turn left. We've all been behind that person, and so you can make that right hand on red with that addition.
And in order, and there's two parts of this. In order for that to happen, I think there's been some discussion between you and Joel about him dedicating an easement for that. Is that correct?
I asked him if he would be interested in giving us the right-of-way needed for that widening.
Now, the question goes to Joel, are you willing to do that? Well, that's what I'm trying to get to. Pardon me? Okay. I think that's what I'm trying to get to. That's why I asked if he would come up. The second deal is there's another issue with the traffic across the street in Crest Parking Lot, correct?
Yes, we can improve the signal with some more modifications.
Which was what the residents were asking for, is for the city to look at what we could do to help the traffic flow. Is that, the residents, or are you shaking your head? Is that what y'all wanted? The two things that we took from that meeting was a commitment from them that they would deal with the water, and they said they would, and I think they have. And the other deal is to help with the traffic that's there. And with the partnership between the city and the developer, we think that Brandon has come up with an idea to fix that. And not me, I'm not going to take the credit. Is that correct, Brandon?
I cannot take the credit either.
If somebody went out there and drew some pretty pictures, it wasn't me.
The idea wasn't solely mine, though.
Well, people that work for you...
And above me.
Pardon me?
And above me.
Okay, whoever it was, we think we've come up with a solution. And we're trying to make this work, but the water and the traffic were the two deals. Now, we also know that there may be some other traffic issues on there as far as parking on the street, and we're going to have to deal with that because the parking on the street on the west side of the street already says no parking anytime. And we may have to look at the parking on the east side of the street because that could cause issues after, if the development's approved. And we're committed that we will look at that when that occurs. Is that not correct, Mr. Simp? Okay. So the city's committed, Joel, to working with you to fix the problems for the people in Glen Haven, as long as you're with the right-of-way and stuff. We think it will work. I don't know if Mr. Grubbs has looked at it or seen it, or...
Okay, can I jump in here for just a second? So my concern about what you're proposing with a dedicated turn, right turn, when exiting the car wash is this. I'm trying to envision how that's going to look because when we did the design at Sooner Rose for altitude 1291, one of the concerns of the neighborhood was traffic going through the neighborhood when going to and from the business. So the determination was made to put a pork chop there to force traffic to be your south, to go back south to 15th Street. However, that area has had continued complaints that people, in spite of the pork chop, still go out to the pork chop and drive north and go through the neighborhood. So I just say that I approach this notion of doing a dedicated right turn with trepidation, considering how I've seen it work already in practice. I mean, it sounds great in concept, but the way it actually works itself out is not as beneficial to the surrounding neighborhood and residential area as what we had hoped it would be when we implemented that pork chop and dedicated right-hand turn southbound to 15 over there for altitude 1291. Is this the same, is that what we're looking at, is driving traffic to go south? Because there's no light there, so you can't, like, the light is all the way down. Well, actually, there isn't a light there either. Is there, we know, right there at Reno?
There's parking lot.
I'm sorry?
It goes around the curve.
Okay. So that's what my concern is, is if that's not going to be the right-hand turn lane is just like a pork chop, a pork chop dedicating the traffic to flow down to Reno?
This would be not a pork chop, although pork chop is a fun thing to do and say, but... Sorry. This would just be for the signal, and this would be for everybody in the neighborhood. As they come south on Glen Haven, then they can turn right on Reno, is what, without having to wait, just yield. Yes.
So you'd have one dedicated lane to go into Crest Parking Lot, or left, or back east on Reno, and then a dedicated lane to turn right without waiting to go west on Reno, correct?
Correct.
If I may jump in briefly, Caitlin Turner, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, of course, he is here, as well as a civil engineer for the project. We greatly appreciate all of the city's efforts and help navigating this issue, and we're looking forward to continuing those conversations to see what's going to best for this area. Of course, none of these conversations will occur, we don't address the zoning application and then the subsequent preliminary plat application. So if I could just touch on that briefly. Of course, we're just seeking to rezone about a half-acre lot that you see outlined there to C3. It's important to note that it's historically been C3, so we're just seeking to include that in that self-commercial portion to kind of expand services for the proposed car wash. So if you all have any questions, it's to that effect. Of course, we'll continue working through the traffic issues. I did speak to some of the Ridgecrest neighbors earlier. I understand that, I know that you said that no parking was on the west side. I look at east side as now kind of of concern, but in terms of just this rezoning application, I'm happy to answer any questions. I can kind of touch on that traffic study if you all are interested in that. I know that, councilman, you were attending, you obviously have been in the loop through all of those conversations, so I'm happy to answer any questions, though, about that rezoning application.
And I realize this is a rezoning application.
Yes.
But you're looking at it that way. We're looking at it holistically.
Understood.
So we're not going to approve something knowing that there's going to be a problem down the road.
Yes.
We would rather get the problem dealt with in the beginning versus have to come back later.
Exactly. And from my two cents, respectfully, like, I'm not interested in just the rezoning piece. I understand that's what we're here for, but I want to know the plan, other than we just, you know, agree or consent to rezone to C3, and then your clients move to the next greatest use of the property within a C3 zoning. So we like to have the favor of the full perspective, so...
Definitely. Just if there are any concerns about the rezoning application, specifically understanding that obviously traffic is going to have to be addressed and dealt with throughout preparations for this development.
So are there any more questions of applicant, or their representatives, or any of the traffic issues? I think probably, I think it looks like we've come to a reasonable solution. The applicants agreed to provide those issues available, and the city's agreed to follow through with what we're saying we're going to do, so is there any other questions or comments?
I just want to make sure that, understand that they're committed to the right-of-way and the...
And that'll require the city also to...
Get involved.
To get involved, because that's an unbudgeted intersection. This points, we'll have to work through that, but we are going to...
We think we can make it work.
Yeah, I think so.
Because we realize it's needed. We just want, we're doing it whole picture versus pieces.
Understood, definitely, yeah. Proactive, rather, than reactive.
And that turn lane will help the residents in Glen Haven with or without this car wash. But this is, you know, Joel providing the right-of-way for us will help.
Yeah, definitely.
That being said, chair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm still hung up on something. What, so I was asking, Councilwoman Byrne, what the property is to be used for or zoned to, and I was trying to look at the comparison in the staff note that's immediately south against Reno, and it's vacant.
On the corner, we could call it, correct? Okay. The work of that would be the houses in the parks. So it's going to be done as well, basically one big, one big project. It's two different deals. I think Mr. Grubbs has a bigger picture of it than we've got.
Are you talking south of this project, Susan?
It's right over Reno.
I'm talking about that tiny little bitty section that's not color-coded, it's blank, directly to the, as I'm looking at it, the yellow box.
Oh, okay. Let's see what you...
Yeah. That's going to be, that's going to be a part of the car wash.
Everything south of it's already C3.
So, okay, is that my question? But what is that, you're saying it's going to be part of the car wash? The area that we're clipped is what I'm saying, there's like a gap there. So I'm trying to, in my head...
Are you putting the gap with the red box together to make the yellow box that was in?
Okay.
What makes the yellow box?
So it will actually be the whole thing, so it will sit with the entrance on Reno, correct, based on this image?
Okay, maybe there's a gap for it to...
Okay. That's where I'm confused.
We're just expanding it north slightly.
All this, this is just the rezoning of this spot right here.
But the bottom of the car lot is C3.
The bottom of the car lot is C3.
So that's where he's done it, that's why we...
And then they're removing those two houses that are blue.
Right.
There, to make the C3 that we have to vote on to give us the entire section where the...
That's what I'm looking for, thank you.
I speak, Susan, after Paul.
Try seven.
Susan, I'm so sorry, I forgot our coffee, Donna.
That's okay. You wonder why I'm disappointing you all, but it's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's underground's fault.
Is this, is this public discussion, so any residents?
This is still a public discussion. Does anyone from the area have anything to say to the council about this particular project? The Rowdies from Ridgecrest.
Mayor, gentlemen, I only have one question. In our discussion that you attended, we talked about, the city talked about looking at the apartment vacancy that's already there and determine whether or not on-street parking really was necessary?
I was trying not to put that too much out there, but that is in the plan. We have looked at it, and that's going to be a future, that will be dealt with in the future, whether that, we leave that as parking on the street or not. Because we're going to look at that. Without, you're trying to pin me down on something, but that is one of the issues that we're going to look at, is that, and what he's talking about is there's an apartment right there, and the people, it appears that the people, instead of parking in the parking lot, choose to park on the street, when there's adequate number of parking spaces in the apartment complex, which would free up the street more. And that's one of the issues that we're going to have to look at in a future deal, that we were trying to get this dealt with first, and also look at parking in the apartment complex. Because if, you know, there's like eight or 10 cars out there in the parking, on the street, and there's 15 or 20 parking spaces in the apartment complex, it would seem that that's where they should park.
Could you do me a favor? We have a stand-in for city clerk tonight. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
J. W. speaks, 3712 shady Brook Drive. Sorry about that.
But that is one of the things that... But that is one of the things that we're going to, we're going to look at.
Well, I've been going by in there quite a number of evenings, and the street is completely full, curb, you know, from the, as far as they can park, south, all the way to the end of, and half of the parking lot of the apartments is empty, so it's obviously run out of their apartment, the apartments are really close to the curb, looks like they're parking there, quick move to their cars, and they're gone, and as you pointed out, if, as long as this issue hasn't fallen through the cracks, so...
It hasn't fallen through the cracks. We were trying to deal with getting his, getting this development dealt...
Well, if we have a commitment from the developer to allow a lane to be put there on his property, however you want to word it, as easement or whatever, that with a proper lighting, talking about the traffic light, where you can turn right, and then this lane that's, has a left-hand turn signal, where they can go left, go right, so only people have to really wait as though they're going straight ahead, so I think that will address the issue that we...
I think that's the plan, is not...
That's, that's the plan. That whole intersection's going to have to be re-engineered.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilman Byrne, I'd say that if we are to do the right away, the best time to do it would be at the final plat, which will come...
Hey, that's your job, not mine. I'm just, I'm just to cause problems, you get to fix them.
Yeah. Once we get to the next item, this is something to think about, we're doing the preliminary plat, then final plat would be where we memorialize that agreement.
Okay, that being said, are there any further questions of the applicant or staff?
Did you guys want to present something? If you, you got something, you, if they're paying you to be, and you want to talk?
I was here to touch on that rezoning application, answer any questions that you all have. I did also speak with Todd Butler prior to this meeting, so if there's any questions to that effect, but I think you pretty much covered it for me, Councilman, so I appreciate that. I was going to discuss that, we didn't meet with the neighborhood, and I understand that the traffic is still outstanding matter that's going to be handled, required to...
But the traffic's an issue before even turns dirt.
Understood, yeah. That's why, yeah, that's why I'm happy to see that discussions are evolving, and I totally understand, so thank you, thank you all for that.
I'm going to make a motion to approve subject to all comments and staff suggestions.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second and a further discussion. All in favor, indicate the thing, aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstention. Is that, this, I was on the planning commission.
Last meeting, you said this is the last one, this is the last one I've got.
He told us last time what was the last one.
So forgiving, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I hate you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
We have your roll call vote. You will need now a roll call vote for that of...
Oh, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Please conduct a roll call vote, Ms. City Clerk. Yes, we have to talk into that.
Just about.
Talk slowly.
Ward one. Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Abstain.
Ward, ward four.
Yes.
Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six, and the mayor.
Absolutely.
If you do it, you just step down, would we save us all the time for a roll call vote on this thing?
Okay, we got through that. Let's go on to move to item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one forty-six, hearing discussion, consideration, possible action of approval of the preliminary plat of Glen Haven described as a tract on land lying in the southwest quarter of section thirty-four, township twelve, north range two west of Indian Meridian in Oklahoma County.
Thank you. This item is a request to a preliminary plat for one parcel for the development of one commercial lot. This item is in conjunction with the simultaneous application, PC twenty-one forty-five requests to rezone the tract to Community Commercial District in its contingent upon the preceding case's approval. This case was originally published to be heard at the July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting, and was withdrawn by applicant prior to start of meeting. The proposed lot has frontage onto East Reno Avenue. The applicant is to submit easement vacation before final plat can be approved. At the time of this writing, there has been one surrounding property owner in opposition to the preliminary plat due to drainage issues he says have been affecting his property. The applicant's legal representation was present at Planning Commission and addressed the commission. Those state and local public notification requirements were met. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item. Action is at the discretion of the council.
I think we've probably beat this horse to death, but there, I'm sorry, there, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council concerning this issue?
On the sign-up sheet, I believe one person identified this item as wanting to speak on it.
J.W., do you have anything to add? Okay. All right. That being said, Chair, entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, I was just going to add briefly, Caitlin Turner again, five to two, Paul Ford Drive, so this is simply removing those residential lots to increase the commercial. I understand that this is the, so, any questions?
Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a further discussion. All in favor, indicate the thing, aye.
You will need a roll call vote, as...
Oh, my goodness. Okay, roll call vote.
Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yes.
Ward three.
Abstain.
Ward four.
Yes.
Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Yes.
And the mayor.
Absolutely. Okay, we got through those. Now move to item number five, Mr. Lyon.
PC twenty-one fifty-two, public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action of approving a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of a group care facility in the R six, single-family detached residential district for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of section thirty-six, township twelve, north range two west, located at ninety-seven thirty-seven Oak Tree Terrace, Midwest City, Oklahoma. Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you. Ms. Tyrika Jones, the applicant, is requesting a special use permit for the subject property to operate an in-home private care facility. Applicant's intent is to operate a small private care facility with ten or fewer geriatric residents. The provided services would include personal care, assistance with daily living activities, meal preparation, medication administration, with potential nursing and medical care provided onsite by a registered nurse. Ms. Jones provided a parking mitigation plan that includes time-slotted visits with two visitors at a time. Family is to provide transportation to and from appointments, but for any reason they are unable to provide transportation, other options will be considered, such as home visits from the service providers. In regards to medical waste disposal, Ms. Jones indicated in her development intent statement that Staircycle will be providing Sharp Skin containers. If the special use permit is approved, line maintenance will require sewer use survey to address types of wastewater produced and methods of wastewater disposal. The applicant's proposal falls under the zoning use unit classification four-point-three-point-one-four group care facility. This use is permitted within the R six zoning district with council approval of a special use permit. Staff from Engineering and Construction Services, Farm Marshal's Office, Planning and Zoning, and Line Maintenance performed a general walkthrough inspection per request of the applicant on July thirteenth. Staff gave preliminary notes, but advised a floor plan would be needed, as well as formal review if request is approved. Per chief building official's calculation of the floor plan of the home, there's enough square footage for eight people. Public notice requirements were fulfilled, but no comments have been received from anyone for or against the proposal at the time of this report. If approved, staff recommends council imposing certain conditions with issuance of the special use permit to ensure harmony and compatibility with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of this request with the following conditions: commercial utility rates are established for water, trash, and sewer, a parking mitigation plan, property is subject to periodic inspections as deemed necessary by city staff, the applicant shall provide staff with a copy of any certifications and/or licenses from the state of Oklahoma regarding the operation of a group care facility at this site prior to the site being used as a group care facility. The property be required to meet and maintain the requirements of Midwest City ordinance as noted in the staff report, as well as others deemed necessary by pertinent city staff. The applicant was present at Planning Commission and addressed the commission. Concerns voiced by the commissioners were parking, location, the number of residents approved for, and level of care to the residents receiving the in-home care. Ms. Jones stated her credentials as a registered nurse, as well as her education background in medical administration, that the staff-patient ratio, and I would like to add that she has updated that to two to one, but that was after this report has, was finished, and is aware of staff's comments to get the residents into compliance for her proposed use. This item was a split decision, with Chairman Smith and Commissioner Collins recommending denial of the item, and Commissioner Husky and Commissioner Smith recommending approval of the item. Action is at the discretion of the council. And applicant is present.
I'm sorry?
The applicant is present.
Okay, I've got a number of questions. Could the applicant come forward, please? All right, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Tyrika Jones. Address is nine seven three seven Oak Tree Terrace, Midwest City, Oklahoma, seven three one three zero.
Okay, I'm trying to get a picture of what you're trying to do. How big is this house in square feet?
Square feet is approximately sixteen hundred square foot.
And you're wanting to put ten people in this house?
It was approved for eight people, but most likely it'll probably be about five or six residents.
Two staff, where are they, one person?
Yes.
So, if we're five residents, that's ten staff, that's fifteen people, and sixteen hundred square foot.
Mm-hmm, I'm sorry.
Um, what, can you describe the care that you're going to be providing? Are they going to be bedridden? Are they going to be Alzheimer patients, dementia patients?
It would most likely be, make sure initially, the goal is to have the residents independent. So, if you think of an independent living home, they're going to be initially there, they're going to be independent, able, and the goal is for them to age in place. So, as they continue to age and the acuity of care increases, that's where they'll be able to stay and won't have to move. So, typically, in, in independent living residents, when they begin to decline, they have to then go to a resal, let me see, independent, then they go to like a facility where they're receiving care, and then at that facility, once they continue to decline, they have to go to long-term care. In my facility, which is a smaller environment, will they receive one-on-one care, they won't have to move so often. They'll be able to age there in age.
Do you count as one of the ten people that are going to be working there?
Um, yes, I will be overseeing, and so when, when, so it'll be two staff during the day for the residents, so the goal is to possibly have two people in the home all times, two to three, two to three staff members at all times.
That's not a two-to-one ratio, though. If you've got five people and you've got two people, that's only six, so that's not quite two-to-one.
Right.
So, will it be two-to-one staff to residents, or will it not? Because you're, you're giving, I don't believe that you're trying to give this lady, but the numbers aren't working with what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
Because if you've got two per shift and you have three shifts, that is six staff instead of the ten that you said was going to be there.
Right. So, that, that's the goal. The goal is to have two staff members, or, I mean, that number is really negotiable, that, I mean, it's supposed, I would like for it to be two staff members at all times.
The reason I'm asking is because of parking. So, you want to have five to six, but you can have zoning up to eight, so if you have eight people and you stick to your two-to-one, that means you'd have sixteen people, that means that you would have about, not quite, five per shift, parking, everything else like that. I don't understand where the cars are going to go in that neighborhood.
So, and, so we have a two-car garage, and then we have a two-car space where they can park, and then in front of the house, there's car space there, and then if you can see on the east, east area, there's, it's closed off, it's, you can't, it's no turnaround or can't get out, it's like an area over there where it's free space for parking, and the neighbors are okay with it.
Is that parked right here?
Yes.
To the left of that?
To, to the...
To the left of where you're standing?
Under the air.
Right, right there. Is that the house right there?
I'm sorry?
That's not a house right there?
Yes, it is. So, so to the left, there's two houses there, and then right across the street is a house on the corner, and, and it's, you can't get out down that way. So, right there on the house on the side, it's like parking area there as well, if needed.
What kind of, what kind of nutritional...
Public streets are all too often considered parking, but that's not exactly a great place for parking, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. What kind of nutritional services are you going to be providing?
So...
And does it require a commercial-type kitchen?
It does not, it does not require a commercial-type of kitchen. There will be a registered dietitian consultant involved, so there will be a dietary, diet calendar created every thirty days, so...
It's admirable what you're wanting to do, but the questions that are, you're getting are as of a public safety, public health issue, and I'm just not thoroughly convinced that in a sixteen hundred square foot house, you're going to have up to, up to eight patients. That's, you know, I live in a sixteen hundred square foot house, and me and my wife run into each other all the time, so...
You got all your employees in there, though.
Hush.
Okay.
But, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about the number of people that you're going to have, and caretakers, dietitian, you know, it's just...
I'm going to back, piggyback on that and go to concern that I have, and it has to do with parking, but it has to do more with, if you're catering to this age and people who are sick, nine-one-one calls are going to happen more, and when one of our nine-one-one calls come, a fire truck runs, and an ambulance runs, and sometimes a cop runs. If you've got eight residents, they're your two-to-one, you've got three or four people working, you've got the slotted time for people to come in, you only have one way in and out, you don't have an extra, because everything ends right there, how is anybody going to be able to get down that street, whether it's your residents or the next that have a nine-one-one call, if you're totally staffed up and it's visiting hours for people?
Well, typically, visiting hours, there're going to be allotted...
Nine-one-one calls don't come in a typical hour, they can come twenty-four-seven, so at the busiest time that you've got, that you can envision. You might have three or four providers and then yourself in there, you might have two people's family that's coming to visit, and you've got a totally full area with only one way in and one way out, and we get a nine-one-one call, a police, ambulance, and fire truck shows up. There's no way to get proper care to any of those people down there, in my opinion, if you're totally filled up like that.
Well, I disagree, because honestly, if it is a nine-one-one call and we do have that many people in a home, I will provide privacy and ask people to leave so that the staff can get, so that the patient can get the care that they need. I mean, it's going to take time for nine-one-one and M-S and the police to get there, so if it is an emergency, people are going to have to move. I mean, and to be honest, if we're being honest, you're all concerned about how many people are in the home as of right, I mean, I just, if you think about it, that home right now could hold up to five or six people, and, I mean, there's care, there's, I'm sorry, hold on, let me slow down.
No, it's fine.
I'm just really emotional, I'm like, I really want to, I'm emotional about this, so...
It's all right.
This is something that's important to you, and we understand that.
I'd like to add that the eight from the max amount of people from the chief building official, that would include staff as well, so she couldn't have eight residents plus that...
That clears that up.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was kind of, I was going to throw that in.
Because we were thinking eight plus ten caretakers, that's ten.
No.
Even graduating Midwest City, I figured that one out.
And then a lot of times, the residents are not going to be able to be mobile, they're not going to have vehicles, so if there's two staff there with two vehicles...
Well, any of your residents, if, because what you're doing is getting the people who still can function?
Mm-hmm.
Will they, any of the residents there, if you have up to four or five, will they be banned from bringing a car?
They will not be banned from, no, they're, no, they'll be able to...
So, they can have a car there as well, so we're adding more cars to my already issued that we've got on.
Ms. Eads has got a question. Go ahead, the floor belongs to you.
So, I'm trying to synthesize everybody's opinion here, and I think I'm in the same camp as everybody, first off.
Can I, I'm sorry to cut you off, but can I go back to you? I'm sorry, I'm, so, to answer your question, no, they're not...
Can I ask that question in a second, if you don't mind? The mayor gave her before, and I'm going to start.
Go ahead. Go ahead. So, respectfully, my concern is the number of residents to be in this home at that time for all the reasons that have been discussed here tonight. For that concern, my suggestion, and that's what I was conferring with the city attorney about, is that it seems like per state statute, we have the ability to curtail the number of residents that would be allowed in the group home. My thought, if the council is so inclined, is to allow the applicant the ability to establish the group home with a smaller number of residents, and let's see how it goes from there. She could always bring it back on reapplication to expand the number of residents in the home upon proof that we don't have any issues with parking, with the safety, with all of the things, that it functions the way that she hopes that it's going to function. Is that maybe something that is palatable to the council?
What, uh, oh, what licensing are you going to be required to get from the state in order to facilitate this?
Um, so we are going to, I don't have my, my grand minutes.
Can I, can we direct that? And Mayor, if I may ask your permission and see if we can have Dawn elaborate? Because this reminds me to an agenda item we had in the previous council in the last month or two. Um, I don't know if, can we distinguish the difference? Is this a group home versus a elderly residential? And what licensing by law would should be required? Because as the mayor, I think what the mayor is pointing to, we all have a duty to make sure everyone in our community is safe and that those that are starting these types of facilities have some sort of oversight.
You're absolutely right. We heard this about two to three months ago, same similar incident. And again, you know, we're just trying to ensure that, so I, Ms. Eads, and answering your question, I would personally agree to that, you know, contingent on all the appropriate licensing and everything that would go along. One que- hey, Fire Chief, Mr., is there a requirement to sprinkle this building?
No.
Can I, on that, the applicant, we did do a walk-through in the fire marshal office, was on site.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, the building, both building electrical, plumbing, mechanical, utilities and I were all on site. So just because this is approved by council, we have these conditions to recommend to, just because it's passed, they still will have to get a, basically an occupancy approval to ensure all the safety requirements are met by fire and everyone else. I'd just like to add that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And get it into ADA compliance.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to live at that house?
Um, if, if we, we discussed it, um, the, they are not required to live in the home with this special use permit. They just...
The reason I ask is that she gave that address as her residence. There's three bedrooms in there and the biggest one is two-hundred-and-eighty-foot square feet and the other two are a hundred-and-ten and a hundred-and-thirty square feet. If you're going to live in that house, you're going to have to pile people up on top of each other.
No, so the goal is not to live there. We will relocate, me and my family will relocate.
Mr. Dawkins?
Yeah, can I just say, here, here's where I come from on this. I am a firm believer in residential and non-residential areas. I, I, and I, any decision I've ever made on the council is would I want this to go in my neighborhood or next door to my house? And if, if, in my house, I've been blessed, but my house is quite a bit bigger than that. And if, and if I found out that there was a, a planned thing like this going in next door to me, I would probably be up here screaming and yelling and also would be, every neighbor that lives on my street would be doing the same thing. It's like, I, I, I think there's a reason that we have residential and we have commercial and that we have zoning for that reason. I, I would hate to know that I'd bought a house up the street and then found out, you know, thinking I've moved in my little neighborhood and it's going to be normal neighborhood and then find out that, no, there's a, there's a group home down the street or something. And, and it, and it breaks my heart that maybe that I'm that cold. But, but I would oppose this for that reason. I, I just, I, I just think there's a reason why we call an area a residential area versus a commercial area or something that's zoned for a hospital or a nursing home or something. And I just look at this, if that was next door to me, I'd be thinking, I just spent a lot of money for a house and now I'm going to sell it. I mean, just being honest.
I, I, I mostly agree with what you said. My biggest problem on this is there's one way in and one way out. If that street went all the way through to a major street, the fire police and ambulance could get in and out. I mean, I'm, I'm just counting the number of people that live there or could live there, the staff, the visitors, everything else like that. And I just see a bottleneck for one of our ladder trucks trying to go down there or an ambulance and everything else. These streets are difficult for our guys to already get down. And if they get down pointed in the direction that they would be, they're going to have a problem turning around. And the problem with that exasperates other calls. So if they're on a call there and it takes them extra time to turn around because it's such a difficult place, it means their response to the next call is slower.
Any other questions?
I think it's, I mean, the attorney was going to help us.
Right. I'm sorry.
What I gave to Ms. Eads was a citation to Title XI, Section forty-three dash one-one-four, Subparagraph B. And in that, under Subparagraph two, it says that, well, Subparagraph B allows the entity issuing the permit to have the authority, and it's in a may, so you don't have to put on what are called reasonable conditions required in conjunction with the approval of the permit. And those reasonable conditions can be based on either a valid exercise of police power, i.e. public safety, which, Mr. Reed, that's exactly what you're talking about, or be necessary to meet the intent and purpose of the zoning requirements. Uh, Mr. Dawkins, that may go, you may put some conditions on there to meet some of the items that you were discussing. So in my opinion, Ms. Eads, if there was a motion to amend the special use permit to put on a reasonable condition as to the number of people that could be in the house due to parking issues or zoning issues or other public safety-type issues, under the state statute that allows, that gives the city the authority or any city the authority to issue this type of permit, that would be allowable.
But are there going to be any licensures that are going to be required by the county health?
There, there, if this is a residential, uh, living facility, yes. Uh, there are, through the, either the county or the state health department, yes, there are licensure requirements. As the former general counsel of the health department, I can tell you, at least when I was there five years ago, there were licensure requirements. I don't believe that has changed for a residential care facility like this. So yes, there would be state licensure requirements that either the state or the county would issue.
If I could, Mr. Dawkins, and I know this is in your words, so there's value in what you're saying. Um, I like what Councilwoman Eads proposed as far as against some limitations on the number of residents, because that's one of the concerns I have as well, Mayor. We don't want to put five people in a bedroom, right? We want to also respect the human rights, the mobility rights of these residents. I do want to distinguish, though, I don't, I don't think her proposal is to start a nursing home or, you know, an actual industry there. But I think her goal is to create a residential living space where aging members of our community can opt for a house versus a nursing home. So I just, I just want you to maybe look at it from a different perspective, if you will, with the limitations she's posing would almost be a household for three to four residents and then also the staff that would be there. And I'm comfortable with the regulations that the county and state have. Um, and, and I just, I want to be clear, you know, any violations to civil rights, human rights of people with disabilities, the elderly will be taken very seriously in this municipality for those that are getting in this type of service industry.
Well, and can we, if we were to do what Susan requested...
Sorry, I'm going to start over because I didn't have a microphone. If we were to do what Susan requested, can we also limit the fact that the folks that are going to be staying there can't have a car? Now, I'm asking legally if we can do that.
That, that would be difficult to say. I think you could put a limitation on how many cars are parked on the public, on the public right-of-way, i.e. the easement for the city. If, let's say somehow there was additional off-street parking that became constructed, it would be more difficult to limit some, limit a resident to not having a car i- if there were available off-street parking in some form or fashion.
And Councilman Reed, I mean, I fully appreciate what you're saying with the dead end on the street, but there are two streets from the diagram that a fire truck can back up and go down another street. And, you know, again, if, if you travel...
And back up. I've been on some calls with these guys and they're getting to some of these neighborhoods and they've got one choice that they're going to go for or wait until they find the neighbors to get them to move their car.
But what I was saying, Mr. Reed, was the way to potentially get to where you're at is to limit the amount of on-street parking that could occur pursuant to the activity of this house.
Can we limit it to zero on-street parking?
What?
Can we limit it to zero on-street parking?
It ha- I would, it, this says it has to be a reasonable condition. I don't know if zero would be a quote reasonable condition.
Probably have to say Traffic Safety Committee and have it, no parking.
And again, I, I think this is a good idea and I understand this is a much better option for many people than going to a nursing home or anything else like that. In a vacuum, this is a great idea. I'm having problems with the fact that we don't live in a vacuum. And I'm having problems with the fact that there is libel. And I, I've been on some of the calls with those guys and I've been on some of the calls with, with Sid guys, Sid's a police chief and I'm a fire chief. And you get into some of these areas where you can't turn around and police call back. And that's what I'm doing. My concern about what's going to happen, so that's why I'm kind of trying to be a little bit of a slipper on this whole parking thing, is I want to make sure while we are helping these people get dignity to live in a house, we're not causing a life-threatening injury to somebody because our first responders take an extra fight against them to get there. That's where I'm at.
Okay, but in fairness, Councilman Reed, then you need to come on over to my ward and we need to create a whole plan to deal with all of the on-street parking that occurs in my ward. And we've had commercial and mixed-use projects proposed that relied on further on-street parking. And it's already a hot mess to get a school bus through there or a fire truck or any of the things. So I, I mean, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I don't see the need to burden this project anymore as opposed to, it looks like to me, either this residence or the one next to them has got a car parked in, with the street parking right there. And the residents next to them may have six occupants that have six cars. And so they're burdening on-street parking because they have more cars than they have garage space for or driveway space for, et cetera. So, I mean, you know, my issue is we curtail the number of folks who are going to be residents of this home if we're going to approve this project. And in curtailing that, we are essentially also curtailing the number of cars. Because if we only agree to approve this for, let's say, four residents, perhaps two or a couple to occupy one of the bedrooms, two single bedrooms with a single occupant each, that's a total of four persons. At best, you should have four cars from that, not including the staff members, et cetera. But in all likelihood, a lot of these folks aren't even going to have vehicles. Um, for folks who are, who are choosing this situation to share a house together, to have a home environment as opposed to being in a more institutional environment, it's an alternative to going ahead and placing them in a long-term care facility. Um, so that's, that's where my thought comes from, is it's going to be a natural byproduct to curb the number of vehicles that are parked there if we curb the number of residents that are allowed there. And perhaps the applicant, if we're curtailing this to like four occupants of the home, four residents of the home, maybe she doesn't want you to go forward with the project at that level. But to me, that's a much more logical issue. And as I was discussing with Councilwoman Byrne, you know, this is our second application for a group home in a residential setting. I think this is something that the ordinance review committee needs to take up forthwith on determining what we're looking at on ordinances for these types of circumstances so that we can have consistency with them. And any applicant knows kind of where we're at with the expected criteria when they go to put forward an application.
Dawn, what's reasonable, in your opinion, to limit the number of off-street parking? Or on-street parking, I mean?
And it, this is strictly my opinion. Uh, I think what Councilperson Eads talked about, I think you could put a definite limit on one car per person. If you have family members in there, one car per family would appear to be a reasonable public safety limitation versus a, a zero finding. Um, and I also believe, as Councilperson Eads said, limiting the number of people in the residential care facility helps address that issue as well. Now, as, you know, the applicant, whether that makes business sense, I don't know the answer to that question. Whether it makes business sense to attempt to create additional parking there, don't know the answer to that question, obviously. But I would think that type of limitation would be reasonable.
So one car per family unit, which could be one person or two?
Correct.
So I, I'm going to take a stab at moving to amend this item with the following conditions, okay? It would be an amendment of the ask to be a maximum of four residents in the group home. The residents would be limited to one vehicle per resident or couple, if there was a couple situation. Um, and that all necessary inspections, certifications, and licensures to operate as a residential group care facility for elderly persons would be subscribed to by the applicant. And did I miss anything, Emily?
Subject to all staff's comments.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. If you could make your motion to include one or the other, that would be easier.
And subject to all staff comments.
This might surprise you, but I want to second it.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring forth, counsel, on this particular issue? Okay. Let's take it one step at a time. Yes, sir.
I'm Paul Smith, three fifteen East Bridgewood Drive. I have not heard anybody mention, but I believe you are changing the zoning for this property. What's going to happen to it, fifteen years young brother?
R six allows for this if we do what we're doing today.
Yes, this does not require a zoning change.
Yes, in other words, we're not doing a zoning change. What we're doing is we're issuing a permit that is allowed under that, under the zoning for this specifically special use that this applicant is wanting. So we're not changing the zoning in the area whatsoever.
Emily, was there notice given to the neighbors?
Yes, sir, everyone within three hundred feet, all property owners were notified. And I did not receive any call or...
And Susan, I think that you're right.
Sorry, I'm going to make a point of order. I do have a motion in a second. Given the contentious nature of this discussion, I will recall for a roll call vote.
Eric, you didn't say this is a funny question, did you?
Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
No.
Ward three?
No.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. Ma'am, there's going to be a lot of hurdles for you to jump through and, and we're going to be keeping an eye on this as, as we were the other one as to how you progress. Uh, we hope you're successful. I don't know if this meets with your business model or not, but this is also a public safety and a health safety issue. So we'll be watching, okay? Congratulations, it passed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, before you close it out, Mr. City Attorney, is there any way on the recommendation that Susan made about redoing an ordinance to keep, to giving some guidelines to the people that are submitting this so that they know right up front, based square foot, parking area?
Uh, I am sure that we can do that. What first step we will take is if so directed by the city manager...
I was asking if it could happen, then I was...
It can, it can happen.
Can it happen?
And we would look, and we would look at the state requirements for residential care facilities and move from there.
Mr. City Attorney, as much as possible, I'd be interested with that issue. Would you also just...
Yes.
I think with our combined backgrounds.
Yeah. Yes, I think the, if you're being in the public health arena, that will help.
May I ask what the approved motion was so I know what to include for our requirements? What, could you repeat the extra conditions, additional conditions?
So, we're going to make a limitation to a maximum of four residents. And one vehicle per resident or couple, essentially, family unit, I think is another way that it was phrased. And then all pertinent licensure certifications. And then lastly, everything that staff had suggested.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of personal privilege, could we have just a quick five minutes?
Five-minute recess. A lot of people need a five-minute recess.
Glad I didn't take you under.
We're back in session. Item number six, Mr. Lyon.
TS four fifty-three, discussion, consideration, possible action of recommending the installation of a no U-turn sign to the ends of the new median located at the south Douglas Boulevard at Soldier Creek Elementary School. Brandon?
Yes. Thank you. So, last year we installed a median to prevent people from, parents, from turning left into Soldier Creek Elementary School. And, much like the pork chop that was referenced earlier, we gave everyone a challenge and they feel like they need to go around the median that we put there. And so they were doing U-turns then taking an immediate right into the school. It was causing traffic to back up, notably on Douglas southbound. And so, it was creating a safety issue. And we responded by putting no U-turn signs up. It will not prevent people from making U-turns, but it'll allow enforcement of people making illegal U-turns. So it prohibits them from now on.
Okay, this has been an ongoing issue. We do have Mr. Trammell that has signed up to speak on this issue. He's got some personal news to pass on. So, Mr. Trammell, you want to come up? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks, sir. My name is Jim Trammell. I live at twelve seventeen Three Oaks Circle, Midwest City. I've lived there since twenty-ten. And would like to bring this to everybody's attention. It is a problem, has been identified, and I'll tell you how much of a problem. I transit, my wife and I transit this intersection and area two to three times a day. I retired from the Air Force, but I still work at Tinker, and so does my wife. On the afternoon of September first, coming back, she was in the right-hand lane northbound, coming through the intersection at Fifteenth. And a lady coming southbound on the inside lane made a U-turn right in front of my wife. My wife was in a white Jeep Grand Cherokee. I don't know if it blended into the background with the pavement or other vehicles. But, my wife hit the other vehicle. And there were people right behind my wife in both lanes who stopped and assisted in the accident, waited for the police to show up, provided their statements that said the lady literally turned right in front of my wife and she had no option to go anywhere. My wife was in the right lane, lady turned and could not get into that cut-through there and immediately stopped when she crossed into the lane. My wife is okay, the Jeep is totaled. So, through no fault of our own, we have now become involved in this issue. There are, there were three turn sticks put up at the end of the median in an attempt to get people to not make illegal U-turns. Obviously, that hasn't worked. I know three more have been put in. I still see U-turns being made there every day as I transit back and forth. My wife happens to get her nails done across the street. And the owners of the nail shop say they see it every day and they're just waiting for another accident. So, being an old retired military guy, since people will do what they want to do, you have to come up with a contingency plan, since the first one is not apparently working adequately. I would like to propose a two-step process. Hopefully, everyone will agree with this. It's going to take a little manpower, at least initially, and then continuation of the physical turn sticks. I think to make an immediate impact, at least for the next couple of weeks, maybe not every day, but maybe every other day, we have law enforcement there at school getting off time. They do not have to park out in the middle of the road to keep people from turning. But I would say you could just place an officer over there in the parking lot and wait for the people to turn, and then provide them with a monetary reminder of their illegal activity. Because luckily, when the lady turned in front of my wife and stopped, she did not have a child in the backseat. My wife was in a Jeep Grand Cherokee Laredo, the lady was in a Nissan Sentra. The basic laws of physics still apply. The Jeep was totaled, my wife sustained minimal injury. But if there would have been a child in that backseat, the child would have sustained, sustained, I suspect, critical injury. And nobody wants that to happen. So, I would like to propose, again, to the council and to our public safety, police officers who did an outstanding job that day, to, over the next week or so, have increased enforcement. I've looked at the background on the city website, talking about increased enforcement during certain times. I would like that. And I think to keep people from doing it, I would propose maybe putting in turn sticks almost all the way down to the intersection. Of course, having a traffic expert look at it and pull those sticks back far enough to allow for large, long wheelbase vehicles like semi trucks to make their left turn coming eastbound off of Fifteenth Street to allow them to turn and go north. But I think the turn sticks, extending them a substantial ways down the street will make people aware that that is indeed, along with the signs and the turn sticks and some temporary enforcement, will get the word out to all of the parents that this is no longer a left-hand turn lane. And maybe even at the next parent-teacher, parent-teacher meetings to go, we've already had accidents here. And you do not want to be in an accident with your child of your own device.
Mr. Trammell, thank you very much for being here and sharing your experience with it. We, this is very high on our priority list to look at. And we'll take your suggestions, obviously, in consideration. Police chief's here. And, and Mr. Bundy is kind of our traffic safety engineer as well. And we're going to try to mitigate this as best as we can. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
In defense of the city staff, too, in full transparency, Mr. Trammell lives in my neighborhood. And I've had multiple conversations with him about this and some other deals. And I didn't ask him to appear tonight. He came on his own, especially since his wife was in an accident. This started out as, and, you know, thankful that the city tried to mitigate this last year, because it started out with teachers and parents out in the street directing traffic. We were hoping that putting in that median would stop it. It hasn't stopped, and it's gotten worse. And now with the fact that the construction is going on at I forty and Douglas, all that dirt's going north on Douglas Boulevard in those big dump trucks. It's just a matter of time before we get somebody seriously, seriously hurt there. And I appreciate the city staff going ahead and putting these signs up ahead of this vote, because it was, it was that critical that we do it and then ask permission later. Because I go, I try to avoid going through that intersection in the mo, any time now, because it really doesn't make a difference. But in defense of the police department, and I shared this with Mr. Trammell, too, it's, it's going to be a difficult task for them to enforce it, because there's really not very many places they can sit to watch to be able to stop these people, other than sitting in the parking lot in the school and just tapping on the hood of the car when the people turn in. Because these people aren't paying any attention. I mean, they're turning. It's visi, these signs are visible, the sticks are there, and they still turn. And my fear is that if we're not very cautious with the officers, we're putting them in a position to get hurt out there, too, because there's no place for them to go if they try to get out of the way. Because the cars are going everywhere. And it's, it's, the thing that bothers my mind is the parents that drop the kids off there expect their kids to follow the rules on the inside of the school, but they don't, they don't follow them on the outside.
So, I'm going to add my two cents onto this. One, I'm going to move to approve this item. Two, I'm going to ask the city manager if correspondence can be directed to the school superintendent, Dr. Cobb, as well as the school board, as well as the principal of Soldier Creek Elementary, addressing this issue and advising them that the recent installation of the no U-turn signs and that there will be an increased police presence. Again, that's an ask. But, just, you know, communicating to the district, to the superintendent, to the principal at the elementary school, to spread the word to parents of students there, and remind them that our goal is the safety for all citizens of Midwest City, including them and their children. So, you know, please act responsibly. And with that, I, again, move to approve this item.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
TS four fifty-four, discussion, consideration, possible action of recommending the installation of a do-not-block intersection sign at the intersection of Glen Haven Drive in Reno.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Lyon.
Item eight, discussion, consideration, possible action awarding a bid to and entering into a contract with Four M Trenching LLC for two million forty-two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars to construct the Northside Utility Sanitary Sewer Project. And city council delegates merit a signing and execute the contract. Mr. Bundy.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. The, this project is related to Centrillium. This will put in a lift station and the necessary force main and gravity lines to get the sewage from Centrillium to our wharf. The bids came in, and Four M Trenching is the lowest and qualified bidder.
This item is budgeted.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Lyon.
Item nine, discussion, consideration, possible action to amend Chapter thirty Parks and Recreation of the Midwest City Municipal Code, Article one in general, by amending the section thirty-one, park hours, posting signs, trespass disorderly conduct, penalty and providing for repealing severability. Mr. Lyon.
Either way, whatever you want to do.
Very good, council. Good evening. Thank you for your time. This is an item that was brought before the park board and was discussed, probably one of the more lengthy discussions that they've had at the park board about extending the hours at WP Bill Atkinson Park in Town Center Plaza. And the recommendation was made after discussion that, that it was probably a better idea to help to avoid any type of additional enforcement issues, to keep with the, the hours that are in code, which is dawn to dusk, for most parks that are this size and are in this close of proximity to homes in our city. Really, the parks that have extended hours are your larger parks. You've got Regional Park, you've got Lyons. I believe Kiwanis is included in that as well. So, we've brought that, that recommendation, and it's at the council's discretion on the decision.
So, I'm going to speak to this issue, because I asked for this issue. First off, I want to explain my ask. This is with regard to WP Atkinson Park, which is adjacent to Town Center. WP Atkinson is a small park. It is exceptionally well-lit. It is adjacent to Town Center, and it was designed that way, so that we could have musical concert events, et cetera. The hangar is right there, immediately to the south of the park. It is exceptionally well-lit. I've spoken with one of the CAOs who's referenced that, her experience with the park is that it's unique in that she can sit in her patrol car and see all the way across WP Atkinson Park after dark. So, my ask was, as you know, Oklahoma experiences a great deal of exceptionally hot weather, days where it's a hundred and five degrees. And a lot of families do not have a pool, they do not have the money to go to Reno Swim and Slide. So, the kids are kept inside all day, the pets are kept inside all day. And dawn to dusk doesn't really afford the opportunity to utilize the park, which WP Atkinson was a geo-bond project. And so, it's meant to benefit our community and our citizenry. And it doesn't afford the opportunity to really utilize the park once the temperature goes down to something that is much more accommodating to be out of doors and playing on playground equipment. Now, I have spoken with two representatives from the park board who indicated that they favored my idea in order to extend the hours when weather dictated doing so, but that staff had made a recommendation to stay with the same-old-same-old of dawn to dusk. And so, they felt inclined to follow staff's recommendation with regard to the dawn-to-dusk setting. So, I understand vagrancy. I understand we've had some issues at WP Atkinson Park already. And we just christened it spring, April, May. I don't remember the exact date, but we were all freezing that day while we were out there christening the park, because it was, it was a cold spring day. So, we've already had some issues. The gates surrounding the park have been broken. And I've had complaints from constituents about that, because they haven't been repaired or replaced to ensure that the kids stay in the park. Whereas before, when the gates were up, they felt safer, that the kids could explore a little more, because it was gated all around. So, we've also talked about installing safety measures in the park in order to determine if there's any kind of nefarious activities taking place, like camera, and being able to trace that activity. So, I tender this idea that if we aren't going to agree to extend the park hours at this point, that we examine extending the park hours on at least a short period, thirty, sixty days next summer in, you know, say, mid-June through July, when it's exceptionally hot, or July through August. Because, again, it provides families and folks who are using the park for proper purposes, time to get out and enjoy the park when weather permits that to happen. And that is where my concern with that lies, is the ultimate and best use of the park. And again, unlike Regional, for example, where there's a lot of areas that, you know, you'd have to be on a golf cart or a four-wheeler to run through there to be able to see everything going on in the park. WP Atkinson is different. It's narrow. It's about a, less than a block wide, essentially, and not a full block long. So, that's my recommendation, is we implement some way, either going ahead and doing it now by ordinance to say, okay, when, you know, during these time periods, or when weather exceeds, you know, a hundred degrees, or something that allows for the ultimate best use of the park.
Will you make that inform the motion?
I would, I support what Susan just said about doing the summertime deal. But instead of doing it now, I think we need to let our city attorney look at it, because we've got a little bit of time between now and June or July. So, it would have to, if we were going to do it June-July timeframe next year, we'd need to start working on this in April or May, so that thirty days, so it's not an emergency. So, I would, my recommendation is that, okay, we understand that there's an issue, we understand the wants that she's got, which I don't think are unreasonable, especially at that park. But we need to look at how, how we're going to implement this, just at that park, so we're not causing problems at the other parks, so that we're not overwhelmed with everybody wanting the park's hours extended everywhere. And I think that we need to probably look at that, the legal part of that, and the enforcement, and the work with the police department, how to, if we're going to do it on a trial run, let's do it the right way, let's work through it, let's come up with a plan, and let's do the ordinance the right way, so that we're not coming back and having to fix it.
Can I just offer something? So, when I first originally read this, I kind of got this sense, or the, I guess maybe the impression based on some of the language, that this was really just focused on allowing more time for youth and minors. So, is, is the current ordinance, the way written, even an adult after dusk at the park could possibly get a citation? Is that correct?
Yes.
As of right now? The only thing that I ask both of you to consider, as there's more discussion in the city attorney, is unfortunately, there's patterns, and we see ups and downs with violent crimes, particularly those involving children and juveniles. And maybe it's my perception, but I feel like there's been an uptick in the Oklahoma County area, where children are either victims of violent crimes or perpetrators. Either way, I call them victims, because children shouldn't have access to illegal weapons. And, and my understanding from the ordinance that we have is, you know, Midwest City Police don't walk around town gathering and targeting children for any reason. And because I know we have one of the best police departments, one of the safest police departments for children and youth in the state, I, I appreciate the ordinance as it's written, because if it's used on a discretionary basis, which is my understanding of how the ordinance is implemented, I think it creates, it creates an additional layer of protection for children, sometimes runaway kids, where parents are looking for them. And so, when an officer comes into contact with most of these juveniles just for violating curfew, they don't arrest them and take them to the municipal jail. What they do is, they do what we call community policing, to implement that, and take them to the house and notify the parent that they're there. So, I like the discretionary policy be there just for the protection of kids, but I'm not opposed to being a little bit more flexible with accessibility to the park, in a way that we can do it in a safe manner that protects everyone, with the understanding that, you know, the chief, we're not asking the chief to begin enforcing and picking up every juvenile that may be passed out a little bit after dawn.
Can I, can I jump on that? Because as, as elementary, I was in Middel Elementary, teacher, principal, or a custodian for thirty-four years. And you nailed it. It's, it's sometimes you can use an ordinance or something to help you. Because I was principal at Troubad Elementary School, it's right in front of Rose State College. I would go to my building sometimes at ten at night, and I would have kids on my playground. And, 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 kids can't mess up a playground at my school, but kids can get kidnapped on a playground at night. And that's where the bad guys look for kids, is playgrounds. I mean, you look for kids in parks and playgrounds. You don't look for them in mom's house. And just, if there's a way, and you can use that, because these are these parents, not being mean, but, but had no control over their kids, but yet, yet a police officer showing up and saying, hey, miss, miss, miss parent, really, it's against the law for you to let little Susie go and play on the playground at ten o'clock at night. And, and that's probably going to help protect some kids more than anything else. I mean, but, but you're right, because there's too many, and, and some of these are parents who, they don't know how to be a parent, but they understand when they can say, okay, little Susie, Officer Smith said you can't be out there anymore, so now you can't. I mean, that's a hundred percent.
And it often gives the parents something to fall back on with the children, that it's against the law. And, and I understand her reasoning. I'm not totally opposed to it, but I, there has to be a middle ground where the police can have discretionary power, so when they come across kids, and, and they're suspicious of something, right? Maybe the kid looks like someone that's been reported missing, maybe we have a violent crime or some guns missing from a neighborhood, then they can make that contact and have their reasoning, ask some questions, and in a community-oriented way of policing, resolve the problem without it leading to...
Yeah. And it's like, I have no problem if the parents are with them. But, but there's a way to kind of halfway keep the little ones from getting picked up.
Which I'll, I'll chime in on this discussion as well. Discussionary powers by the police department are utilized every day. This is just another one of, number of tools that they use on a continual basis. And obviously, regardless whether it's dusk to dawn or ten o'clock at night, they're not going to roll through there and, and clear it unless there's a creating disturbance or, or something of that matter. So, Ms. Eads, I agree with you. I mean, the park needs to be utilized. And if you can put your ask into a motion, and we can go forward with a preliminary study next summer, and take a look at it, and monitor, Josh, we can monitor park usage. Also, we also need to monitor the rate of vandalism that we receive, and see if there's any changes in that. So, with that, Chair, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to leave the ordinance as it stands today. However, to direct the city manager to facilitate putting together a study with the city attorney, police department, and parks, prior to the summer months of next year, see if there's a way we can extend the hours that Ms. Eads has requested today.
Can I make an add to that?
Jump in there.
That they have it to the council. I'm going to be up the council next April. But if they have it to the council, the first meeting in May. That way, there's plenty of time to get, if you guys are going to make any changes, so people would know it.
And, and the other add would be to include Councilwoman Eads in those discussions, since this was her suggestion.
Second.
Let the, let the city clerk catch up here. You good?
As long as everybody understands what they're voting on.
Does everybody understand what you're voting on? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, end cap saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Move into item number ten, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration, possible action of approving a resolution opposing the proposed Interstate forty and South Post Road location, the new Oklahoma County Detention Facility near Tinker Air Force Base, the Midwest City Multi-Athletic Complex Facility, and certain Middel Public School campuses.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll address this particular issue. As you know, the jail selection committee has been meeting, and there was several sites that were recommended to the jail selection committee. And the two that are south to our south, I forty and Douglas, and then Seventy-Fourth and Post, drew a lot of opposition from our constituency, from the Middel School District, and also a, and also our city. So, the jail selection, site selection committee met today and pulled these two particular sites off the list for consideration. But, this is just a recommendation to the county commissioners. And as we all know, they're an independent body and could change or not follow the recommendation. So, it is...
Move to approve.
Can I just say one?
So, I don't get to have my say.
I'm sorry. I, I thought you got what you really wanted across, which was...
Not really.
Okay, sorry.
It's imperative that we... Next one's on your forehead. See what I'm up against, ladies and gentlemen. But it is imperative that we make our voice known, that we oppose these for a number of reasons. And so, I would ask that we approve this resolution. And I do have a properly formed motion.
Can I?
And I had an obnoxious second.
Can I add something to that?
Yes, sir, by all means.
On the resolution, that we also support the Middel School District, because they're opposing the Grand Boulevard site, too. And that was passed on.
And that was passed, I agree.
So, I think we, it would be, we add that to the resolution, that we support the school board's issues in opposing the, the site on, because that's...
Mr. City Attorney, this is already, will it have to come back to us if we add to it?
Under the term possible action, as defined on your agenda, includes being able to amend the item that is before you. That amendment is germane- to amend the item that is before you, that amendment is germane to this topic, so it would be allowed.
So, I would give a yes, but he's going to turn, he gave a fifty-two.
Can I just add something to that? So, the way that the jail bond proposal was written, it doesn't specifically say all this money has to go towards the construction of a county jail, it says other county facilities, a sheriff department. I think this community would be willing to consider a sheriff's department being built, or a mental health facility, potentially have the conversations, but not the jail, and not the locations that are being identified in this community. And, and I just want to say one more thing, because I've seen a lot of communities throughout the county opposing the idea of a jail coming into their neighborhood, and I, and I respect and I understand that, I myself was opposed to the jail bond issue. However, I, I also want to make sure that if the right location came up, that not all communities be opposed. And this county needs a county jail, and if we can assist the county in a constructive manner, in a location that makes sense, we are not going to automatically turn them down. But the locations that are being offered up right now are just inconceivable for our community at this point.
Well, and the biggest opposition to the, the three locations that we've talked about, is the fact that they're, they're close proximity to elementary and middle schools, so I would agree with you on that. It's going to have to go somewhere. I think what has been narrowed down, it looks like it's going to the airport. So, we'll make the amendment to the resolution. I have a motion and a obnoxious second. All in favor, in capes sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you. New business public discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity to come before council and discuss items that are on your mind. Please be advised that if it's not, it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage with you in a back-and-forth conversation. So, with that being said, Carolyn, did you survive all of this? Are you still here? Would you come, you signed up to talk to us, come forward? And when you get to the podium, please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to remind the speaker of the time limit.
And yes, Carolyn, we do have four minutes. Thank you for being here.
My name is Carolyn Dorr, I live at twenty-five, twenty-eight Murray Drive, just two blocks from here, my house backs up to Midwest City Middle School. So, we've been having some parking issues, and, pretty serious. I've had people, I'm going to show you the video. There you go. Oh, I have video. Just a second. Just watch the whole thing, it's about one minute long. I have people park in my front yard, I've had extensive property damage, they hit my black chain link fence twice in six weeks. There are two other cars up here at the barricade, okay? Every day between three fifteen and three forty-five, between fifty and seventy-five children cross. They're picked up on Murray Drive, because there's no place else for their parents to go. It's unbelievable. And then he almost takes out the corner fence post. It's one minute, in one morning. This is every day, every day. There are no speed bumps on this first block of Murray, there's not a school zone, there are no zigzag lines. I put landscaping timbers down, so that the kids could walk safely across the grass. I will do anything to keep these kids safe. This is insane. I've been to Middale School District twice in the last three weeks, I've been to the police department. You know, I retired, the last thing that I want to see is one child hit or injured in my front yard on video, because they're on their phones, they're not paying attention. This is my front yard, that's my yard. I can't put anything bigger or more permanent in, because there's a power line directly under there.
Ma'am, well, we can't discuss this with you because of how it is. Mr. Bundy, this is kind of his area, the streets and everything else like that. I just stepped down the dais, not to be rude to you, but to ask if once you were done speaking, he would get with you.
Absolutely.
Ma'am, what's your, what's your last name again?
I will talk to anybody. Dorr, D O E R R. I've been here eight and a half years. I've lived in some interesting places, and I chose Midwest City.
Okay, are you going to be home tomorrow?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm familiar with what you're talking about. I, I will come by to your house tomorrow and see you.
It's pretty serious, it's serious. Thank you for listening. And remember, less than a decade, these are going to be voters.
Thank you for being here, mister.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to bring for the council?
They've gone into it.
Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, these items are placed on consent agendas, trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee does request an item to be removed, or not, there is not a unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Move to a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, in capes sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Now, we, now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned. I call the order of the Midwest City Hospital Authority. We have three discussion items, item number three requires no action by us, Mr. Lyons, item number one.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approved August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes.
Move to a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, in capes sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries, item number two, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, approve a resolution declaring twenty-eight eighteen, twenty-eight twenty, and twenty-eight twenty-four Park Lawn Drive, located in the south half of the southeast corridor of Section Thirty-four Township twelve North Range Two West as surplus, and approving agreement to exchange said property with SSM Healthcare Oklahoma, Inc., of Oklahoma, Inc., for six oh one National Avenue, which is located in the northeast corridor of Section Thirty-four Township twelve North Range Two West. So, we're just, go ahead, Robert.
If you would please note this handout that was provided earlier, a better economic development director would have probably included it in the packet, but such was the way it happened. We bought the vacant lots on the east side of Park Lawn Drive, from the twenty-eight eighteen to the twenty-eight twenty-four block, for four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars back in twenty-twenty-one, after SSM Healthcare leased the hospital, lease of the hospital was approved. These lots were purchased with the intent that they would be redeveloped as part of the master plan and vision for the hospital district. SSM would like to have these lots, because they are in close proximity to the hospital, and seem perfectly sized for a new building being contemplated in support of the hospital. SSM officials proposed an exchange for, for the, a vacant lot that it owns at six oh one National Avenue, and the lot that they own, or the SSM owns, is shown in blue, our lots are outlined in red. The lot at six oh one National Avenue is undeveloped and abuts property at three oh one North Midwest Boulevard that we purchased two years ago. The property at three oh one is somewhat of an unusual shape, if you look, it's kind of got a panhandle on it along the western edge, and by obtaining six oh one National Avenue, it would give us a chance to square off both lots via minor subdivision, thereby making them more marketable. The properties were appraised as equal in value, and an exchange would obviously be beneficial for both parties. The resolution before you approves the surplus and disposal of the property in exchange for six oh one National Avenue. But before we move on the item, there are two minor edits to the resolution that our legal counsel for the hospital district, that Mr. John Williams suggested. On the, in Section Two, the very last sentence in Section Two, there's, the word made is there, and that should be may, instead of made. And then, the very last sentence in Section Four of the resolution, needs to have the words, and to close the real estate transactions contemplated by such agreement added to it. So, we would recommend approval of the resolution in exchange for the property, and I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Make a motion.
Can I ask a question before you motion? Oh, you, okay. Mr. Coleman, is this the property where I think part of the agreement was that we were going to pay five thousand dollars for closing costs, or something like that? Is this the same? No, okay, never mind, I withdraw that.
Start all over.
See, there you go, Pat.
I make a motion to pass with the following language, and I'll give you your copy, so you don't have to write this down, to amend the resolution by changing made, M A D E, to may, M A Y, in Section Two, and to add, quote, "and to close the real estate transaction contemplated by such agreement," end quote, to the last sentence in Section Three.
Four.
It's four or three? I got three on the paper, you gave me.
I'm sorry, I'm correcting myself, it's something that wasn't wrong.
I'm not that smart, so somebody has to write this stuff for me. To the last sentence in Section Three, and to approve the resolution declaring twenty-eight eighteen, twenty-eight twenty, twenty-eight twenty-four Park Lawn Drive as surplus, in exchanging said property with SSM Healthcare of Oklahoma, Inc., for six oh one National Avenue.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor, in capes sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension? Uh, road call vote, please.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Absolutely.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item, we don't need any action on item number three, and next item, item number four, Mr. Lyons.
Discussion, consideration, possible action to reallocate assets as recommended from our financial advisor.
I am going to say this, and I liked our own financial advisor, it's time for him to retire. But if we're talking about our hospital trust, right, these new people are wonderful. They, we're now big enough to go with a bigger group, who offers us more than what we had before.
Mr. Cromer, would you like to address the...
Everything, yeah, everything what he just said, we're able to get lower rates, we're saving tens of thousands of dollars for transaction costs. We have thirty-one plus people from this, our new company, Segal Marco, gives great analysis, and so we are very pleased with them, with all the time that we've vetted with them, and so we are super happy with their recommendation.
The issue is a Georgia Bulldog.
So, the end chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Hang on, but we're making some changes.
Correct, we are making some changes. If you refer to it, we are based upon many meetings, and many pages, and many months of analysis with them to reallocate. And so, if you have it before you, we're looking to mix it up a little bit here, just based upon their analysis. It lowers our risk, and keeps, and also increases our yield.
And they're well aware, we've, we've met with them over the last couple, two years, three or four times, and they're well aware of, that we're not a risk-take, we're not like a risk taker. We expect the money that we put in to do, to work for us, and if you look at what, what has been done, it started out at forty million, we spent almost a hundred million dollars over the, over the years, and we're still over a hundred million dollars. It's, we've made it pretty clear to them that we're not, we're not in this for risk, we're, we're in this for, to use this stuff for economic development, and for the betterment of the city, and to still have a fallback, just in case the sisters leave, which is probably never going to happen. But, the way it's set up, we still have to leave that money in there, just in case.
Absolutely, that's what they started with their foundation of doing it, of here's how our current portfolio is, what could we do that actually keeps, lowers the risk, and still increases our return, statistically speaking.
The thing is, it's just really bad. So, our downside is not as much, or our upside is worse. We actually defend the bad, almost defend the bad, the situation, but it's just more risk.
And I thought it was, I thought it was a very well thought, and it was a very likely loss, because of cost.
They're doing, doing good, and because of the size of the company, they were able to lower our expenses, our overall expenses, so we were happy about that as well. Same, same investments, it lowered fees.
Right, we did nothing, and they're saving the hospital authority tens of thousands of dollars.
With all that being said, Chair to entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, in capes sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. We now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring for the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we are hereby...